It is five o'clock, and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. The City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Councilmember McEckren?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Mayor Protim Cox?
Yeah.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. This is the time for public comments. We have no one in the audience, therefore I will declare for closed session items by City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We only have two items this evening. They are both existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. It is the SEC versus the City of Victorville. The case number and the parties are set forth on the agenda. One item is for the Airport Authority, the others for the City Council. And to the extent there is reportable action, we will report it at the close of the closed session or the commencement of the regular six o'clock meeting.
Thank you. We will recess now to closed session, and a regular session convenes at 6:00 P.M.
You could just tell when you're going even going to eighteen. I just bought him a new, I bought a new car from him in December.
It is six o'clock, and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Councilmember McEckren?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Mayor Protim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. Now may we have closed session announcements by our City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had two closed sessions this evening. Both were existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The case names, it's the SEC versus City of Victorville. Case names and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. One item was for the City Council. The system item was for the Airport Authority, and there is no reportable action at this time.
Thank you. Now we will have the invocation, which will be delivered by Minister Scott Will of Vernon Bush, and then we will have the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Police Chief San Lucia.
Father God, we thank you this evening for these that are sitting on the council for the City of Victorville. We ask, Father God, that you bless them, Father, in a mighty way. Touch each and every life, Father God, for the decision-making powers that they possess, Father God, or the powers that you bestowed upon them. So, Father, we thank you tonight that as they run this city, let them run it as you've designed it. We ask these blessings in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands.
May we have the City Clerk present the agenda and any revisions or additions for the record?
Okay. The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary or by the mayor. As deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, following our revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. We have one revision to the public hearing. Let's see, it's item number B1. It's a supplemental staff report, potentially required with potentially required revisions to propose ordinance number VWD-012 based on draft revised State Water Resources Control Board Emergency Water Conservation Regulations released on April 28, 2015. That is all we have.
Thank you. At this time, we have no appeal hearings, so we move on to public hearings. And item B1, public hearing continued from April 21, 2015. Victorville Water District Conservation Program Ordinance Number VWD-012. And I open the public hearing. And let me see. I do have one card. Norman Miller.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Norman Miller, and I've just, something's been going through my mind on all this stuff about the water conservation and that, and understand the need for it. I understand it's going to be done. The thing that's bothering you a little bit is that with the water conversation, that means conservation, that means you're not going to get as much money for the water, which means you're going to need money for capital improvements in that. And where's that money going to come from? Usually it comes from raising rates. Well, the thing that bothers me about that is you have, what is it, $20 million debt that's owed to you. You're not collecting any interest on it. That interest certainly could be used to help pay off your capital needs or whatever else is needed. I think that needs to be addressed. From what I've read and seen, it doesn't look like Victorville City is ever going to get any of that money back. That's my opinion. Because it happened before, when the city was owed money from an interdepartment, and it was never, it was written off. And the city can do that, because it's a political entity, and they can do whatever they want, and they do do that. My other thing is, with the water shortage coming up, it would be nice if there was some way, without getting too involved, you could let the consumers know if they're doing a better job of conserving water. I know we got the little charts on the mailers that we get, shows how much we used the last couple of years. But maybe we need a percentage figured in there, or maybe they say, well, do a little bit better job. Just a little something to help people, because a lot of people have no idea what's going on, I think. They just got water, they use it, and that's the end of it. Anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
Madam Chair, before you close the public hearing, you have two options this evening. This is related to the consideration of Victorville Water District Resolution 12. And we have been fine-tuning it and revising it consistent with the mandates being handed down by the governor and the State Water Resources Control Board. They've been meeting actually today, and that's why you have a revision before you this evening. That revision reflects their latest iteration of what they believe should be in this ordinance. We believe the ordinance is in pretty good shape. However, you have an option tonight to close the public hearing and consider it tonight. Or I think what staff would recommend is that you continue the public hearing until the next meeting. Like I said, the State Water Resources Control Board is still meeting. There's a possibility that they're still going to have new regulations or tinker with the existing regulations, so we may be, again, fine-tuning this ordinance before it's adopted. We have to have something in place by the end of the month. And with the next meeting, we'd have time to still make some changes if necessary. But you can keep the public hearing open, continue it is one of your options, or you can close it and then consider the ordinance tonight.
Very well.
Madam Mayor, I hate to put this on top of what Andre's just raised, but Mr. Miller, who I've known for a long time and does not make statements that are grossly incorrect as a rule, but he's made a couple there in the last few minutes, and I really feel a need to deal with both of them. One of them is the idea that we just write off any loans we can't pay, and, you know, too bad. And the other one is, what I think, thanks to the Daily Press article recently, is a misunderstanding of exactly what that $20 million loan is. That it's an interfund, but it's connected to the acquisition of the wastewater treatment plant, which is a water-producing entity. And I want to make sure I'm right. I don't want to jump too far out.
Yeah, you're looking at me. I'm assuming you wanted me to confirm.
I want you to straighten out whatever I've said that's wrong.
There was a $20 million loan from Water to the Victorville Municipal Utility Services, which was a city department, is a city department. That was repaid in 2013, completely, including interest. There is a loan between Water and the Wastewater Enterprise, which is also a water fund.
Both of these are funds under the Water umbrella.
There is not currently any borrowing between Water and the city, so there's nothing to be written off between Water and the city. And the Water Department has written off accounts, delinquent accounts, from past customers that we can no longer try to get money for. But the Water District has not written off any debt to the city whatsoever.
And we don't just write off interfund loans because we feel like it and we can't pay them back?
We do not.
We've paid them all back.
There was one issue that came up in 2000, I want to say seven or eight, with the Sanitary District that Mr. Miller may be recalling as a, quote, "write-off." When that issue came up, this has all been discussed as part of the San Bernardino County Grand Jury, part of the LAFCO process. Essentially, what LAFCO indicated to me was that there was a, we knew there was a $3.5 million debt from the Sanitary District to the city, and the city had two options. It could either repay that, at which point that property tax would, as part of the LAFCO process, become city property tax and be transferred to the city, or it could simply be written off. Ultimately, we simply wrote it off, and the $15 million in property taxes became city property taxes. We could have very easily repaid $3.5 million, and $18.5 million would have become city property taxes and been transferred back to the city. Either way, the cash remains the same. $15 million was transferred. It was property tax, taxes that were paid that didn't have a purpose in the Sanitary District and ultimately did have a purpose with the city.
One other thing, Norm, that I feel a need to respond to is that, yes, if we stop selling water, we do not generate the same level of water rate revenues. I would agree with that. But when we stop selling water, that means we also stop pumping water. And one of our largest costs, other than labor, is the cost of pumping water. That cost is reduced. The other cost that we can potentially get relief on, if we reduce pumping enough, is our purchase agreement with MWA. So, we may not have to acquire as much water from MWA based on reduced pumping. So, the only consequence of reducing water sales is not raising rates. That would be the last choice that I think we would, as a council, pursue.
And also, if less water is pumped, there's less need for capital as well.
Again, Mayor Garcia, it's the council's choice, again, staff's recommendation at this point, because it's still a moving target a little bit, would be to continue the public hearing and then consider the matter finally at the next meeting on the 15th.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McEckren, second by Mayor Protim Cox. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, on agenda item B2, I need to abstain, as my law, the law firm that my insurance company uses also represents Lamar, so.
Item B2. This is the Lamar Companies in Lancaster, and it's PLN 1500008 and PLN 15-00009. And I open this one here for public comment. I believe I do have a card. Donovan Collier.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Donovan Collier. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Lamar Advertising. We're here to answer any questions that you may have. We've worked closely with staff with input from the City Attorney's Office for over three years on these agreements. So, please, if you have any questions, I'd love to answer those for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this an appropriate time for us to raise questions, or after the public hearing?
We need to close the public hearing now.
Close the public hearing?
After I close the public hearing. I need to read.
First, just close the public hearing, and then staff can give you a little presentation, and hopefully we can address.
At this time, I close the public hearing on B2.
Madam Mayor, this is basically, the items before you are a couple of agreements that result in the culmination of a prior settlement agreement that was entered into between the city and Lamar, which actually arose out of the prior condemnation action related to the Nisqually Interchange, wherein that project resulted in the need to remove various billboards. Through that, we had a sort of global settlement with Lamar. And as has been previously briefed to this council, the agreements before you this evening are the culmination of that settlement and put into place sort of the last pieces that were acquired. And they involve, obviously, the relocation of, or the demolition of three billboards north, at the north end of the city, in return for putting up a digital billboard near the Red Roof Inn site, and also the then removal of a dilapidating billboard, static billboard, and the replacement with another static, more modern structure. With that, the, like Donovan said, the applicant's here to answer any questions, and we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Very well.
I have several questions of the staff, but I don't have any questions of the applicant.
Yes, go ahead.
I was trying to get through this. Two issues, I think. One is relocation of billboards, or is this true, relocation of billboards that was westerly of I-15 at the river?
That's correct.
That is one of the issues.
Yes.
Andre's probably better equipped since he did the negotiation.
Can we, let's address that one first. As I recall, there were three billboards.
That's correct.
And, so just deal with that. The agreement to take those down and do what?
We are replacing those with a new digital, two-sided digital billboard that's going to be placed near the Red Roof Inn site.
Where at what site?
The Red Roof Inn on Mariposa.
Now, I'm not, not, I hope I'm not being overly critical of anyone. I know that advertising is agreeable, with an awful lot of people, a lot of businesses depend on it. But they were located in an area that nobody really cared about. You're going to stick them in an area that is developable and, what, facing the freeway, and they're in the middle of the city, and... I've always understood the need for billboards. If you're going to Vegas or in outside areas or before you get to cities, but I've never understood billboards in the city, because they invariably end up advertising a business in the city that's competing with another business in the city, and the other business in the city can't have a billboard. Which seems to me that something really wrong with our sign ordinances that allow that. If those signs, which were dilapidated, and I believe at least one was on a wooden pole, and they're surrounded by junk now, if those needed to be taken down or replaced, I had no problem with that. But to take them in an area that's not likely to ever develop, an area where nobody would have cared, and put them in an area that's likely to develop, that's going to interfere with future business signs of businesses that are going to develop in the area, seems kind of short-sighted on our part, as municipal development goes.
Well, certainly, what the global settlement agreement required was that we come to, we being Lamar and the city come to a mutual agreement on the location of the replacement board. So, this has been something that's been vetted with staff, and staff has worked with Lamar to try and find a suitable location. There have not been that many available locations that the city can help provide in terms of relocation sites, so this is something that staff has worked with. Certainly, I don't disagree. If you have issues with the ordinance, that's something we can look at. But what you have here is an agreement that basically implements the provisions of your municipal code right now and is consistent with that, and it's something that staff is in agreement with.
Well, this is not a standalone item. This is part of some other kind of agreement that we have in regard to billboards?
This is the follow-through of a global settlement agreement that was entered into with Lamar Industries with respect to numerous billboards that were caused to be removed as a part of the Nisqually Interchange project. Instead of providing monetary compensation to Lamar, we went, entered into a global settlement agreement that basically allowed for our, working with them on relocation agreements to replace billboards that they were taking down with new billboards that were at sites that were going to be mutually agreeable between the city and Lamar. This is one of those sites.
The other thing is that the new digital sign is going to, I was out there today, and if I understand it correctly, it's going to be, it's going to be sited in the corner of the gravel parking lot at Red Roof Inn. So, it's, that property is not likely to be developed. But I have a more serious concern about the other one that's going to be rebuilt along Mariposa that is a very developable, developable area. I mean, I have an unhappy constituent, by the way.
I understand.
Who's not real pleased with this, so I'm going to be her voice, not her advocate, just her voice, that's all.
That one is merely a situation where we are just allowing Lamar to replace a, what is considered a dilapidated board or a board that needs some serious repair work with another board. We're not asking them to remove it. We're not requiring the removal of it. They have the rights to locate there. All we're doing is facilitating their desire to replace it with a more modern board. It's not going to turn into a digital board. It's still going to be a static board. They have the right to have that board and keep it as a dilapidated board at the present time.
Do we have any option to talk to them about where they're going to locate that?
Staff has apparently have done that.
Staff has done that based on direction from closed session. This has all been discussed in closed session over the last three years, and we've brought it, options to the council in closed session, and this is sort of the final result. We've tried several different options, and this was the final result. That was directed to staff to negotiate out of those closed session.
I remember not too many months ago, where we had a potential developer on Armigosa just south of the existing development where we have all of the restaurants. And there were one or two billboards on the property. And initially, the condition that been faced with all billboards, that if you're going to put up a brand-new business, the billboards come down. And in that case, and I don't remember the particulars, I'm sure that Mr. Robinson or the city attorney does, they attempted to negotiate an agreement, and we would, we, the city, would get a business that would pay taxes and benefit the city. And I'm told that that's a dead issue, and it couldn't be worked out, but we will still have the billboard there for years that keeps the property from developing. That doesn't make any sense. If, I don't want to, I don't want big government telling the property owner how they have to develop the property, but I think there's some expectations on the municipal services that we provide, that we have a clean-looking city, that we have businesses that we treat the same, and what we allow for advertising. And, you know, I don't care if they want to advertise on a billboard in Barstow about a business in Victorville, but when you have a billboard next to a business that can advertise and advertise on the billboard, it seems like to me that we're not doing due diligence, we're not being fair, because it would seem, unless it's as a result of some kind of litigation. If a business can have all the businesses that we allow by code at a billboard, all businesses in the city should have all the signs allowed by the code and the right to have billboard. We don't have that. We don't have that at all. And so, while we regulate, while we regulate the amount of signs, it apparently is who can afford to outbid the other one who gets the signage. So, it must be perfectly okay, which means we shouldn't have any restrictions. Or it's not okay, which means that the purpose of this government is to clean the city up and have logical development, and that just goes in the face of all the logical development. It doesn't make any sense. And, you know, if we have to keep making agreements, then every place you have these billboards, they're not going to have developable property. Seems like, the logical conclusion, if we have to put in curbs, gutters, sidewalks, water lines, sewer lines, that billboard would constitute a development and be required to provide all the same amenities that any other developing property would have, including development fees. Seems fair, seems logical. Staff?
Those are certainly issues that we can look at in connection with the ordinance and the municipal code that are on the books right now. The issue before you tonight is somewhat limited. It's related to, again, a settlement of the city's condemnation or eminent domain action with respect to existing billboards that Lamar had negotiated with existing property owners without the city's involvement at all. So, we would have had an obligation to provide pretty significant financial compensation to Lamar had the condemnation actions gone through. What we did instead was we came to a settlement agreement, again, the global settlement agreement, that provided for basically the transactions that you have before you tonight. The issues you have are absolute legitimate issues, but those should be taken at planning commission.
So, as a result of building the interchange, there were billboards that were there. There had to be agreements on. Okay. Any councilmember here when that went on, you were here as a part of that agreement? There were how many billboards, then, that had to be taken down or relocated?
I think we affected three, Donovan. Was it three? Three billboards that were affected that would have been subject to a condemnation action. And instead of compensating them for the value of those billboards, the agreement between the city and Lamar was to enter into relocation agreements and allow for them to be, to propose locations and propose replacing other billboards with single billboards in lieu of compensating them for the removal of the billboards.
So, if three billboards were negotiated, how many billboards do they get to replace the three billboards taken down?
I'm not sure if there were, there were three. Donovan, can you answer that one?
There were a total of three billboards in one easement.
Right.
Real property interests that were taken as part of the interchange. In exchange for that, there was one billboard that is currently under construction on Armigosa.
Right.
And then the one billboard that would be at the Red Roof Inn, and then the one reconstructed billboard. But in addition, there would be the removal of the three billboards, which are currently subject of a condemnation action by Caltrans as well. So, it would be a six for three, I guess, in total. Six would come down, two new ones would go up, but then there would be the one reconstruction. So, really, there's only two new boards and one board that's already there that's just being modernized.
The six are coming down?
Three have already been taken down as part of the...
A total?
They're gone as part of the La Mesa-Nisqually project. Another three will be coming down, and those are the ones that the councilmember Cox mentioned that were up north part of the city. So, six total, two new ones, one that's existing but would just be refurbished.
The three that are taken down as part of Caltrans' widening project, why are we involved?
Because your zoning ordinance requires that any time there is a removal of a billboard pursuant to an eminent domain, there has to be the right of the billboard company to relocate somewhere else in the city, regardless of who the condemning agency is.
That law?
That's your municipal code, yes, so it is law.
I mean, if you condemn my house, then you have to buy me another house and let me pay for it?
That is, no, this is, these are the provisions of your municipal code with respect to your sign ordinance. That's set forth in your sign ordinance, that's what you have previously agreed to.
I'm not going to argue with it, but it seems like to me if another entity comes by and condemns, that's the end of it. They buy the sign, you take it down. I don't know how we got involved in relocating it. But assuming that that's the way it goes... Did anybody look at the agreements to see what the life of these billboards are? What is, how much have they depreciated out? What is the value? What rights do they have to have them forever?
We certainly did in connection with the condemnation action. We went and did evaluations, Lamar provided evaluation, as is typical in any condemnation action. Typically, the property owner provides their appraisal and appraised value, the city gets its own appraisal. We had all of these billboards appraised, and obviously there were discrepancies between what we thought the value was and what the property owner thought the value was. That's the whole purpose of the settlement agreement, is to negotiate something in between so we don't have to go to court and curl the legal costs of battling it out and having the potential that they use the property owner's higher number versus the city's number.
I don't just, I know we need advertising signs. You just, and I'm not opposed to advertising, we all rely on advertising. It seems to me that when we have developable property in the heart of the city and people wanting commercial land, this is commercial land, they're going to develop and they want to have signs. There ought to be a prohibition of advertising on those signs, any business in the city. There ought to be something. If there was five years left on the sign, they ought to be relocated with the new five year. The cost of relocating, it seems the municipality should pay for it. But to give a brand-new life and a brand-new lease that's going to be there for another 40 years in property that, you're not going to get a property owner that's going to get out of the lease, and therefore you're just saying, well, the property is no longer developable.
Well, again, we don't...
But these billboards are very, very expensive, and so if it's no longer developable and they're going to put a new billboard there, fine, make it comply with all the conditions that we require of developing property. Curbs, gutters, sidewalks, streetlights, pave-out, sewer, water, development fees, everything. That seems eminently fair to the citizens of the city.
And if that's what this council wants, we can certainly look at that and review the sign ordinance and see if that's something to change on the ordinance. This, again, this transaction is trying to implement a settlement agreement that was done as part of the condemnation required for the Nisqually interchange.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment and a question for the city attorney. So as I understand it, six billboards came down, three that we're talking about here, and this is a settlement. If their settlement does not take place, is the city at risk?
Yes. If the settlement is not completed, then obviously the parties have the ability to go back to court and litigate the issues, which would be, again, litigating the value of the compensation of the billboards previously removed with respect to the Nisqually interchange.
Well, just for the record, I support this settlement agreement, and I appreciate the staff's work on this.
I didn't realize this had been submitted to the judge and it had already been ruled on, so...
Well, the settlement agreement, again, results in the dismissal of the case and the whole case will be settled if we implement. We previously entered into the settlement agreement, we're basically not implementing the provisions of that settlement agreement. And that settlement agreement was presented to this body and approved by this body.
I'm not raising any kind of concerns about the settlement agreement. I participated in that and, you know, we made that agreement. I think this council is bound by it. My question is more about the specific location of the sign that's going to be reconstructed. And my question is, are there any options about where that sign might be located in that general area? And I'm asking because it occurs to me if you've got two property owners who intend to develop or sell their property, if the sign sits in the middle of one of those properties, it might be a real impediment to development, or if it sat on the border between the two, it might not be. I don't know if that's true. I'm just wondering, is there any way that can be further reviewed and discussed and perhaps discussed with the property owners? If they're going to rebuild it, why not locate it in the best possible place?
We did negotiate, and again, in connection with trying to implement the settlement agreement, there were numerous discussions between staff and representatives of Lamar, looking for locations, basically for all of these billboards, to look for suitable locations. One of the criteria was that we would try and find a city-controlled piece of property, hopefully a freeway location and a similar type location, and we could not come up with any suitable locations. There are all kinds of limitations based on Caltrans requirements as to proximity between billboards, et cetera, et cetera. So our options were somewhat limited with respect to city-controlled properties along the freeway. We looked at all of those and could not come to any agreements. These were the locations that we, that staff thought were the most appropriate.
But the one that's dilapidated has been there for a long time, am I right?
I believe so.
That's the only one I'm talking about.
Right, and they have a contract. If we didn't do this part of the agreement, the old dilapidated one could remain. I don't know what the term of the lease is, but that would be your, Lamar's right.
My question coming through? Maybe not. Maybe I'm not getting it through. I'm not arguing about doing it or not doing, I'm just saying, is that the best location for the, at least to try to benefit the, if it moves 50 feet one way or the other, but all the property owners are happier with it, wouldn't that be worth doing?
It'd be worth looking into. That wouldn't be a problem. In fact, the signed ordinance does provide that should that property ever go into development, that there could be a modification, a location of that sign to accompany the development. I mean, that was one of the focuses of the code amendment years ago when it was put in because of the understanding of that potential restriction. So if that property, somebody comes in with a site plan and says, hey, I want to develop, there is an opportunity to relocate that board to a more appropriate location, I guess.
And Lamar would pay for that relocation? Probably not.
Well...
Again, you'd have to figure out the costs and the impacts and who's responsible for requiring...
It would be an option available.
It would be an option available, yeah. But that's another thing that would really be presented to the city as part of the development proposal. I mean, you would get it and see where they would propose to move that billboard to.
Is that somehow included in the settlement agreement, or is it part of the ordinance, or?
What we're hoping to do is to finalize the provisions of the settlement agreement, put it to rest, because this is, I think, the final chapter in the settlement agreement, which has been years, and be done with it. And I'm, you know, I think we have a reasonably good working relationship now with Lamar that hopefully these types of issues can be addressed in the future.
Yeah, we have a lease, obviously, with the existing property owner, and the issue of the location of the board was never raised to, you know, to our attention, so we didn't really even contemplate putting that anywhere else on the property. That just wasn't, we didn't think that was an issue at the time.
And it probably wasn't until yesterday for me.
Do you have a problem at least talking to the property owners and seeing if there's somewhere else on the property that you could maybe locate it, I mean, at least just in good faith?
We can, we can explore that and see what's possible.
And I guess also then I'd ask that you receive input from city staff to make sure that your concerns are addressed.
Absolutely. So, and Mr. DeBortowski is correct that we do have some constraints with regard to spacing issues that we'll need to look at to make sure that's okay, but we can take a look.
Okay, so then we continue this, or?
We recommend, again, approval of these items if it's okay with the board.
Can they all be done at once?
They can all be done with one motion, yes.
I'll move to approve item 15022, 15023, 15024, 15025.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember DeGretti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember McEppren absent. Now, we have our consent calendar, and items C1 through C8 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be removed for discussion. Anyone?
If there's none to be removed for discussion, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember, Mayor Pretem Cox, second by Councilmember Kennedy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously to approve the consent calendar.
Now, we're going to item D, written communications. Item D1, Legislative Review Committee appointments. The recommendation is that the city council direct the city clerk to advertise for the existing vacancies on the Legislative Review Committee.
I just have a question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
It has been some time since we've had a Legislative Review Committee, but as I recall, I'm probably mistaken, Legislative Review Committee was to review ordinance of the city. It was the city council's purview, I guess, to review and report on legislation from the state. Are we changing this, or is the suggestion to change this, or why are we doing this?
Mr. Mayor Pretem, this came up as a result of the discussion on toll lanes, and Councilman McEckren suggested that if we revived the Legislative Review Committee, they could be used to review legislation or potential legislation such as this. You are correct in that the last time they met was in 2000, the year 2000, 15 years ago now. And they typically would only review proposed ordinances of the city, but there's nothing precluding this reconstituted Legislative Review Committee from serving two roles. If the council wanted the Legislative Review Committee to perhaps get a little, dig a little deeper into a proposed state law or federal law, that's something you could ask them to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McEckren, second by Councilmember Kennedy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item D2, Additional Appropriations for High Desert Power Project, High Desert Power, yeah, High Desert Power Project, reimbursable expenditures. The recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve additional appropriations for HDPP, reimbursable operational expenses, for a total of $340,000.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, this is a longstanding contract that the water districts had with the HDPP, the power plant, and we've paid these expenses and then they reimburse us. And they've done that since the beginning, so it's nothing out of our pocket.
Therefore, it's nothing new that's come up, it's standard? Okay.
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember McEckren, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, Award of Modular Relocation Project to Commercial Mobile Systems. The recommendation is that the city council and Victorville Water District Board of Directors award the sectional modular relocation project to commercial mobile systems in the amount of $32,244.48.
For approval?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McEckren, second by Mayor Pretem Cox, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, Approval of $63,000 Equipment Purchase for the KME Fire Engine as Stipulated in the Assistance for Firefighters Grant. The recommendation is that the city council approve $63,000 to be utilized to purchase equipment on the KME fire engine as stated in the grant award.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pretem Cox, second by Councilmember Kennedy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, Hiring of Public Information Officer. The recommendation is that the city council discuss and provide direction to staff.
My, this has been discussed for some time. There are pros and cons when we consider the schedules of current staff and the difficulty in finding time to interact with other public information agencies, news media, et cetera. And from the council's point of view, some of us have limited time and others, but we, it's difficult trying to get information to go to different council people, and it becomes difficult for the secretaries to do the job and provide that. We have a need for a public information officer. On the other hand, I know we're going to have criticism because, well, we could hire a firefighter or a policeman or pave a street or something. And so I had asked that this be agendized to see what the council, if they have an interest, and if they do, if they don't, that's the end of it, but if they do, to include this as a part of the budget discussions.
Well, I'm in agreement to that because I really do feel that by actually providing the council with a public information officer, it would make it a lot easier for us to function and to be able to have better information, better timing. As far as information for the different locations that we have to attend and the time, sometimes it does take a lot of time away from our daily routine that we have, just trying to figure out where we have to go and how far is it and where it's located.
I would concur that we have it as a point of discussion through the budget process. At the end of the day, I want to make sure that, as a function of that, that the money's there to pay for a position like this and that it wasn't taking any away from public safety, because I don't think that that's the desire of anybody up here. But I do agree that, you know, I think we would be better served, the public would be better served, the media would be better served if we had someone in that role, that that was somewhat their primary function and role. But again, I'm going to defer to our city manager and staff with respect to the budget and just, I agree, we should have that as a part of the budget discussion if it's appropriate.
Madam Mayor, I have a quick comment. I agree as well, but I think this goes back to priorities and limited resources, so I would look forward to working this through the budget workshop, which I'm not exactly sure when that is. But certainly, you know, we've got a number of great projects we'd like to do, including positions at the city where we'd like to make the city whole. It's something I keep referring back to. Recognize there are some gaps out there, but when it comes to public safety, when it comes to skate parks, when it comes to a number of worthy projects, I think we need to prioritize that. And a term I use all the time at my job is called unfunded requirements. These are certainly things that are very valuable to us that we do need, sometimes there's just not the funding, and when funding's available, you can quickly refer to a one-to-end list or prioritize list that, you know, when it comes to city positions, here are the top three, if funding's available. When it comes to public safety, as soon as that money's available, we're going to do this. So I'm looking forward to that conversation, but I'd really like a prioritize list that this council can somewhat agree on as funds are available, as opposed to what we see now on a weekly, or I'm sorry, every two weeks, we get this situation where we've got money going out the door on water meters and fire departments, fire engines, this equipment here. We've got hundreds and thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, every two weeks. So I would feel much better if we had a consolidated list of requirements, and the public information officer is a great one. But I know that there are more, and I'd like just a priority as we go through the budget workshop, whenever that is.
This would be a question, Jim, you've had some experience with this, and Doug, you have, well, no, maybe you haven't since you've been city manager. At one time, we had a public information office with, what, five people in it, or four?
Yeah, I can answer that. At one point, our public information officer had three additional staff.
Yeah.
Briefly, four.
Do you see this as a full-time position?
Do you see this as a full-time position, a part-time, add-on task?
I actually, well, just a little bit of history, we lost our public information officer, I want to say, four years ago, had a staff member who was a public information coordinator until about two years ago, maybe one year ago, and ultimately, that position, we couldn't fully fund, and it was moved to another department doing similar duties, marketing-type duties, so, but for the last two years, actually, as part of our internal budget process, I've put, on the front end of the budget, before it's come to the council, I've put a public information officer in there because, because we have no public information officer, I become the public information officer, and I find myself, you know, responding to any manner of things and asking department heads to respond to any manner of things, which has worked, but that's not what you pay me to do. And then additionally, some of the things that Mayor Garcia talked about with the, just the scheduling of, you know, whether it's speaking engagements or ribbon cuttings and things like that, is something that typically the public information officer handles, and we have competent staff who are doing that because we don't have one, but that's not their primary function either. So anyway, making a long story longer, each of the last two years, literally, in the last week or two before the budget is finalized, I've had to cut it simply because we weren't balanced, and we had to have a balanced budget, and I've said each year, I would like to have a public information officer, but I'd like to have a balanced budget even more, so we've brought you a balanced budget. This year, I would say we're probably 98%, 99% done with the budget, essentially funding everything we've done in the past, very little new programs, and we're looking forward to one month from tonight, four weeks from tonight, June 2nd, bringing the budget forward with a small amount of surplus to discuss with the council, what sorts of things would you like to spend that on. I can tell you, as of tonight, one of the things that I would recommend is a public information officer for all the reasons that have been stated. We also have some police activities we'd like to discuss with you on that night that we'd like to add, as well as some other fire activities, and a little bit more. So Mr. Negretti is right, I think it is appropriate to discuss it as part of the budget, and we are looking forward to presenting all of those options, and certainly will be open to any others that the council may have.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I see enough heads nodding, we don't need a vote on this. We will include it as part of that, and we're also in, we'll make every endeavor to get you the budget well ahead of time, not, you know, just three days to take a look at it because we want you to be well-informed, we want the public to be well-informed as to what's proposed, and allow a healthy discussion on the second, and hopefully get a budget passed.
Very well, thank you. So, we're all in agreement too. Now we move on to public comments. I do have some cards, and I remind the speakers to limit their comments to three minutes. The first one that I have is Hayden Martin.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, staff. My name is Hayden Martin, and I'm from the Office of the State Assemblyman, and we had office hours in your city hall today, and we just wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Mailer. After her, it will be Juliana Arvizo.
Mayor, I was going to discuss something, but I'd rather write you later, I don't want to talk about it now.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. I have quite a problem going on. The city has so much money. We bought new Jeeps to read meters. They come out there to read my meter in a Jeep. Now, we have the automatic reading things that we've had for years, we weren't bothered. Well, all of a sudden now, we come out, we hire a company to come out, put new meters in, okay? That was wonderful. Now we have to have an antenna to the meter. Some boxes will take the antenna on top. My box won't, because we've been there for many years, we know a lot of things that's going on in this city. So now we have to put a hole in the top of our meter to put the antenna out. Well, they can't do that, they have to drill a hole in the top of my meter or change the meter box completely. This is ridiculous. Then the next thing that comes along, these guys come, we have three guys, two trucks, and they can't drill the hole in the meter box now, so now we have to come back again to take care of that. What are we doing? I mean, Baldi Mesa played a lot of money for all those automatic readers, they've drove by and read them for years, now all of a sudden, we got all this extra money, and we're not paying money back from the base where we put the treatment plant in, that money, we're just going to throw aside for a while again and let it run and run and run until we write it off, and this is not right. The stuff that has gone on, we have been here a long time, and you guys all know what's going on, and I think we're being ripped, I think the general public is being ripped by the water company, I think somebody better step up to the plate and do what has to be done, and done right, because that's sending two trucks out there, three guys out there, and they just stand there because they can't do anything. They don't have a tool to drill a hole, I mean, if I would have had one big enough, I'd let them use it and do the dang thing, get it done, but no, now we've got to come back again.
You have 30 seconds.
So they can read it. So anyway, you better see what's going on and find out, and go back in your books and see all the stuff that has been promised and not done. Thank you.
Thank you. Curtis Green.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Just wanted to bring your attention, oh, Curtis Green, County Supervisor's Office, just wanted to bring to your attention our Veterans Resource Fair that we're having on May 28th. It's a different in a way that we're providing services for the veterans here in the high desert. Normally, you, there's a claim process for disability and benefits that go to LA, and as you know, with the internet and everything, it's kind of just cyberspace, but this way, the Los Angeles representatives are coming to the high desert to actually start claims or to push claims forward for all the veterans up here that do attend, and we'll also have about seven employers there that may interview on the spot for the most highly qualified employees. So again, May 28th, at the Hilton Garden, I'm sorry, at the Courtyard Marriott in Hisperia. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne, it's either Marshall or Michael.
Council members, I've come here again talking about the library. We need to move the library, it's, it's not in a very good place, you all know that. It's dangerous over there, especially after dark. We need people to work in the library, the books are dirty. I've talked to Ryan about it, there's a number of buildings within the city of Victorville that I'm sure we could have a very beautiful, safe, lots of parking, library, and I think that we really need to look at it. I've had a council member before tell me that, well, we can't move the library because of the endangered population in downtown, maybe they need to keep that one and have another one somewhere else, I don't know, but I know that one is dangerous, and it's not up to par, and I'd really like you to take that into consideration, it's really a viable thing for our children and for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the cards that I have. Now, let's see, we have city manager reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, you, I'm sure you all found in your mailbox this week, the rec pages that came out documenting all of the different recreational opportunities that we have available in the upcoming quarter. We had an ad in there regarding some of our water conservation programs that has been overwhelmingly successful, I was talking with staff earlier, and they are absolutely inundated with requests for low-flow toilets and for the cash-for-grass program, so please be patient, we're trying to process those as quickly as we can. We actually have, I believe it was about five times the number of requests for low-flow toilets versus the number of toilets that we actually have, so we're looking at expanding those programs if we can. Also coming up on the 21st of May is our annual Public Works Day, we have fifth-grade students who come and learn all about the variety of jobs and activities that our Public Works Department does, this has been going on for, I don't know how long, probably close to 10 years now, and it just gives kids a different career path that maybe they didn't consider, and lets them learn a lot about the city, so I know on occasion, council members have taken the opportunity to go out to see that, and I'd invite you all to come out and do that. And then lastly, the, I thought the Daily Press did a good job reporting on the difficulties that we've had with the California State Auditor regarding the water rate survey that they did, and I want to thank them for the article that talked about our defiance, as they called it, we think that the California State Auditor got significant portions wrong. I could spend an hour talking about all the errors that are in the report, but I won't. I would invite you to, to take a look at the city's website, right on the front page is the full response that I wrote as an open letter to the California State Auditor, if you want to find out more, and if you have any questions, give me a call.
Thank you. Council members?
Sure, Madam Mayor, thank you, I have some comments. First of all, I'd like to thank Curtis and Supervisor Love and Good for hosting the High Desert Veterans Resource Affair, or Affair, apologize. As a veteran, I actually plan on attending, and I have some questions of my own, so I would encourage all veterans to take advantage of this. You know, there, there's sometimes folks that don't realize some of the great resources that we do have available to us, so when they do come along, we really got to take advantage of that. On the water situation that we're in right now, I just, my comments to staff as we get closer to having to vote on, on the way ahead with water conservation, I just would like, and maybe I just need to get with the city manager beforehand, but I would like to see a little bit more clarification about what exactly we're talking about, because when I look at stage two, or I look at some of the other guidelines for what we're proposing, there, there's language in there that talks about, let me see, I had it right here, something like, stage two, 10% to 28%, I mean, that's a big delta, and quite frankly, I don't wash my driveway off, you know, I don't even have grass, I prefer rocks because I don't want to mow the lawn, but the bottom line is, is that I'm not sure quite how much more I can save, or will be required to save, and then you start talking about the penalties, so I'm just, you know, I've been getting a lot of questions about that, about watering schedules, and what does this mean, and I've got to be honest, I'm just not quite sure how, you know, when is this going to start, when are penalties going to be enforced, how is this going to work? So I think before the next council meeting, I think I need to get a little bit more in detail about what, what exactly we're proposing to do, because as I understand it, we had three years of reserves, and it just doesn't mesh with a lot of the crisis that you hear that's going on in the rest of the state.
Let me answer just a little bit of that right now, but to alleviate your concern about what are our residents going to be required to do, we'll make sure to have a full presentation once we have a final ordinance in place, and that should be two weeks from now, we're required to have that in place prior to June 1st, it'll be an immediate implementation ordinance, so, but essentially, the requirement that we have to meet is the water district has to use by this time next year, 28% less water than was used in 2013. So what staff is trying to do is come up with programs that will encourage our ratepayers to save water so that the water district can meet that requirement. We'll have to monitor it over the next year to see if we're getting there, and if not, then we'll have to perhaps ramp up to the different stages, but I share your concern, actually, that, you know, we have done a great job, and MWA has lobbied the state on the great jobs that not just Victorville, but the whole high desert has done in conserving water over the last 10 years, and, you know, forcing us to conserve more at this point is, feels unfair, because they aren't taking into account anything that we've done prior to 2013. So I share your concern, but it doesn't alleviate us from the mandate, unfortunately, so, but I'll make sure that staff is prepared with a full presentation once we have that final ordinance in place with all of those questions answered.
Thank you, actually, just one follow-up, and that goes back to the strategy, which, as an individual homeowner, I'm not going to probably make a big dent, but when you're talking about golf courses, the median sprinkler system, the over-watering possibly in the parks, I mean, just, I mean, I've been out there, walked in the mud, I'm not being critical, I'm just saying, for the big water users too, if we could address that specifically, I'd really be happy.
We're actually taking out all of our grass medians, that's part of the mandate, is anything that is ornamental grass in a shoulder, a median, anything like that, we're already removing it.
Anyone else?
I had, just, I had asked Doug earlier this evening in regard to the water uses, if we use non-potable water, same rules don't apply, and we have a, may have a source. We have three wells, I know, that we're not using, and I don't know what the conditions of those wells are, but we're using potable water for irrigation, and that could be replaced by well water, which is non-potable, does not have to be treated, it's a cheaper source, and if there is a way to use reclaimed water, I would like staff to look at that in the next few months on the possibility of using reclaimed water. Go ahead. Yeah, just a couple of things. Since I've been on this council, what, four and a half years, we've been talking about the library, and we've been talking about paving, and we've been talking about lights and roofs and the condition of the facility and its own, and, and since I've been on this council, we've not had a serious discussion about relocating it, and I've heard probably three or four times the reasons why we can't. What I'd like to propose to the council is that we have a serious discussion about how we can, as opposed to somebody coming in and telling us all the reasons we can't, let's look at some realistic options about what we can do. I realize we have a large community to serve here, but it's all not in that section of Victorville, that is one residential area, but we have others, and the idea that appeals to me most is that beautiful water district building we've got sitting over on, but that is so far from every living human being in the city of Victorville that, anyway, I just would, I'd like to see us have a conversation about what we can do about a library facility and not just shut it off before we have a discussion. The other thing I share with Doug is I was just deeply, deeply disturbed by that audit report that came from the state auditor about the rate-setting process for the water district, and, and the Daily Press, I think, did a good job of covering the audit report, but Shay, I really would like to see you cover Doug's response and straighten out some of the false, clearly false information in that report. I mean, the idea that we misuse ratepayers' money is just ludicrous, not true, and I think the facts support that, and I'd just like to see the Daily Press give that proper coverage. And then lastly, I really would like to see us get involved in reclaimed water on the golf course, I don't, I don't know how to do that, but I'd sure like to see us do it.
Well, I'm in favor of looking into relocating the library, I've heard from a lot of people, you know, that for the same reasons mentioned, the location, the books not being appropriate, dirty, all kinds of... um, the books not being appropriate, dirty, uh, all kinds of different things, you know, at first it was the lighting and the road getting in and out, um, so, seriously, we need to, uh, say council reconsider relocating it.
Please, let's have a discussion.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we can put an item on the agenda, uh, for the next two weeks to appoint an ad hoc committee, uh, of two council members to discuss it, just for educational purposes. Um, the, there is, uh, development impact fees that are collected for a new library facility, um, it would not replace the one in our old town, midtown area, um, for all the reasons that have been stated, I, I think that that library needs to stay there, I think that the clientele that go there need it more so than, than perhaps you or I do, um, and, but I think staff has been supportive of building a second library as those funds come in. Uh, the question is, when and where will that be, and we can certainly sit down with a couple of council members to discuss that. Just for information purposes, uh, this week, we are completing two projects, one is a new roof at the library, the other is some new lighting at the library, so we are doing our best to maintain it in a, in a proper way. Um, it, it's funny, every time it comes up, I find myself defending the library, I'm very proud of our little library, um, I think our staff do a great job there. Um, certainly, it would be wonderfully, wonderful if we could find some money during the budget to put into improvements at, at our current library while we try to plan for, for building a, a bigger, more modern library, uh, perhaps elsewhere in the city.
And we do have an organization called Friends of the Library that, that could probably play a much more active role in this community, raise money, get, get some book donations, I mean, there's gotta be a lot of things they could do.
Anything else? Anyone? No? This meeting is adjourned.